March 18th, 2024, regular meeting of the Union County Board of Commissioners to order. At this time, I would like to recognize Vice Chairman Brian Helms for the invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If you're so inclined, please join me in prayer, please. Dear Emily Fallow, Lord, we just want to thank you, Lord, and thank you for all the blessings that you provided to our county, our state, and our great country. Lord, I ask that you provide your wisdom tonight to this board so that we are able to make the best decisions possible for the residents of our great county. Lord, I ask that you be with us, that you lead God right in us as you see fit. For this, in Jesus's name, we do pray. Amen.
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next item on the agenda is informal comments from the community. We'll recognize the speaker signed up for the informal comments. Each speaker must address the board from the lectern and begin their remarks by giving their names stating whether they are residents of Union County, indicating the municipality with which they reside, if any. Each speaker will have three minutes to make remarks. A tone may sound at the conclusion of your remarks. A speaker may not yield any of his or her time to another speaker. Speakers may not discuss matters which are the subject of public hearings. They must be courteous in their language and presentation. Restatements or repetitive comments by the same speaker, whether at the same or separate meetings, may be ruled out of order and terminated by the chair. Personal attacks will not be tolerated. Speakers may leave written comments and/or supporting documents, if any, with the clerk to the board. Our first speaker is Georgianne Eccleston.
Hello, I'm Georgianne Eccleston. I live in Indian Trail, and I'm here to speak about the sore smell in the heritage development. I have spoken to it before. I know that you folks do have a proposed solution, and I'm wondering if we're going to get funding for it and if it's going to be implemented. People in my community are not able to be outside. Today is not a particularly good day. You may not exactly want to be outside, but the warm weather is coming and would like to be able to sit in our yard, enjoy the features within our community, and go for a walk, and you just can't do that. The odor is awful. I'm hoping that you will be aware of the problem that this is presenting for us, and hopefully, the proposed solution will be approved and funded so it can be implemented. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Harold Schmaker.
Good evening, Harold Schmaker, Waxaw. I saw the ARPA funds on the consent agenda and wanted to make some comments and recommendation. Large portion of the taxpayer funds given to local governments is going to salaries. I can't help but think of those that were injured by the vaccines that were not given a safety net. Six North Carolina nurses have shared their stories with me on their vaccine injuries. Lindsay House, Anissa Sane, Angie Wyatt, Stephanie Dixon, Deanna Hamby, and Margot Borg. They all had a similar story. They were pressured or coerced into taking the jab and then suffered injury, including hospitalization. They worked at the big hospitals, Atrium and Novant, and when they were unable to return to work, they were fired, denied workman's comp, and were discarded to the curb to fend for themselves and start the long process of applying for disability benefits. I understand you can't control how healthcare companies treat their injured employees, and you're not responsible for the policies of the federal government, but I believe there is something you can do, and I also believe it's something that should be done, and that is to count the vaccine injured, do an assessment of damage to the people that thought they were doing the right thing and took the jab. These nurses loved their jobs and loved helping people, so they put their own health at risk and paid a most severe price. They lost their health, their careers, some had their cars repossessed, and all of them suffered in their personal lives as well. They lost so much. The right thing to do is to count them, acknowledge what happened to them, and count. How many were injured by the vaccine? How many were hospitalized after receiving the vaccine? How many became disabled as a result of the vaccine injury? How many lost their jobs due to refusing to take the vaccine? How many died due to injuries from the vaccine? On the last one, due to unprecedented increase in all-cause mortality in 2022 in Union County, a letter was sent by the Board of Commissioners of the state to inquire. The state responded back confirming the 287 excess deaths in 2021, the vaccine year, over 2020, the pandemic year, and stated to expect higher mortality. This is a difficult subject to talk about because their stories are so hard to hear. Margot had to endure six to 10 seizures a day where she would often stop breathing. Lindsay's symptoms were so bad it filled three notebooks that she couldn't even walk to the mailbox without her blood pressure getting into the danger zone. Stephanie came here in this chamber and spoke a year ago about her experiences in heartbreaking detail. They have suffered so much. It won't change their condition, but it's the right thing to do to acknowledge their injuries and let them be counted. Maybe this would open doors for them for more assistance, and also, it would maybe help us to never allow this to happen again. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Russell Mullis.
Good evening. Let's see, it's my first time, so be patient. So I'm grateful for this opportunity to address you all today on the pressing matter of the Short Water Line project and its impact on our community. I'm Russell Mullis, sorry about that. I live in Union County, in the Alton municipality. So anyway, I'm here on behalf of Bridger Medlin, Chuck Broadway, and myself on a flower farm called Blue Hill Garden. And it's come to our attention that the project's application period has closed, and this has caused significant concern among us. Unfortunately, we were not made aware of this project's application period, and we are now facing the consequences of this. Last year, two families' wells ran dry, and another farm, its well produced less than a gallon of water per minute, right? And as a result, we are struggling to access water resources, and in fact, one family had to drill a new well at a depth of 1,000 feet, and it got less than a gallon a minute also. I think it was .5 gallons. So as a flower farmer, I have particularly felt the effects of this closure. Our crop yield has significantly decreased as our natural water supply will not allow for further expansion. Our farm over the last two years has received recognition from visitors from cities throughout North and South Carolina. We've brought business to local photographers within the county, and despite this, I'm not here to highlight the negative impact of the closure. Instead, I want to focus on the positive effects of reopening the project in the county. Reopening the Short Water Line project would provide us with county water, which is crucial for our community's growth and promote agritourism. Tourists who visit our county will be able to see the beautiful fields of flowers. For myself, Bridger Medlin, he does carriage rides in downtown North Carolina, Monroe, North Carolina. But, let's see, yeah, by bringing photographers in, we'll be able to showcase the beauty of Union County to the rest of North and South Carolina and beyond that, ultimately benefiting not just my flower farm or Bridger, Chuck, but also other local businesses within the county. So I want to urge you all to support reopening the Short Water Line project. It's essential for the growth of our county and will help promote agritourism, bringing positive attention to Union County. So, yeah, I'll close with this. And it was something that I was thinking about today. When you think of Yadkin Valley, you think of wineries, right? People going and visiting the wineries. When you think of Henderson County, you think of the apple orchards, and when you think of Union County, what comes to mind? So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Carolyn Burrows.
I have permission to bring a visual today, correct? I'm going to speak about the same thing. I'm Carolyn Burrows, and I'm from the Alton community, and I've spoken many times about the Short Water Line, but I wanted to speak to you the same way Mr. Mullis did about the farmers. We've got several there. We're in a short period, maybe a two-mile stretch together. And Mr. Mullis, he does, he said, a flower farm? He don't just do flower farms. He does flower farms. So, Mr. Bridger Medlin, who is at the Carriage Farm, he does all these things, and everybody's probably seen him. He's on his, he's probably gone up to Bilton Moor. If you look at his website, you see all kinds. And then, this one is our third most producing agriculture in Union County, and this is Broadway Farms. Mr. Broadway recently took first place for his thing, this bulls. I want to ask you to consider opening the water line because of this and other reasons. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Dr. Amanda Stanford.
Hello, I'm Dr. Amanda Stanford. I've been a resident of Union County for 10 years, and I represent Change for Monroe. I'm paraphrasing, but Socrates said, "You're always between the two horns of a dilemma. You can either be a collaborator or a subversive." And as everyone knows, for every action, there's a reaction, and every event creates consequence. Without the correct information, you cannot make correct decisions. If you make incorrect, unwise, or foolish decisions, even having the correct information at hand, yes, you're free to do so, but that should not be confused with the word freedom. These are not the same words. Free simply means without or an absence of. The word freedom means choosing which consequence you'd rather have. It does not mean your actions are without consequences. The most privileged among us have the most true freedom because we can understand, extrapolate, and then choose which consequences we'd rather have in relation to our possible actions. Those who are the least privileged among us have the least amount of freedom because they understand the least, see the least, are invited to participate the least. They cannot choose as easily which consequences they would rather have in relation to their possible actions. It's called, it's a phenomenon called the lottery of birth, and it's the one thing you really have absolutely no choice over, the people you were born to, the people who are your parents, no choice. And here's where the responsibility comes in. If you have powers, I explained last week, responsibility comes with that power that you accepted when you accepted the duty of public office. Your responsibility is to the people who have no privilege of choosing which consequences they would rather have in their lives. So your choices, your actions and decisions affect their lives in a very real way. If ethical government is about doing the least amount of harm to the most amount of people, then proposing to our state representatives last Wednesday that they draft legislation to allow you to sell Yadkin water to Monroe City proper is unethical to the point of immorality. Selling that water to the citizens of Monroe City at a profit after having removed the fluoride from it above the objections of the NAACP, numerous local pediatric dentists, respected pediatricians, and medical professionals is wrong. When you govern, you govern for people who do not have a voice for themselves. You govern for those who do not have the resources, understanding, education, or time, for people who are unwilling or unable to accept the responsibility that we have placed upon you to govern for us. So if ethical government is about doing the greatest good for the majority of your constituents, focus on all the good ideas from that meeting, the ones that talked about making us unique from Charlotte by building a Union County that's more than just a suburb of Charlotte with a 70/30 residential, commercial, industrial split. That does the greatest good for our majority. Instead of selling Yadkin water to the citizens of Monroe City, the only ones, because the only ones who benefit are yourselves, without including the fluoride, regardless of what a small overly vocal minority feels about it without it even affecting them, the actual residents of Monroe City proper will have to send their children to the dentist more often, which most can't even afford, and this will sink them further into debt, which will in turn do its part to worsen the violent crime, addiction homelessness, and other problems this government seems completely insensitive to for profit.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any other speakers who have not signed up who wish to speak? Hearing done, we move on to the next item on the agenda. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing for rezoning, case number 2022 CZ009 Dixon Farm. I will open the public hearing and recognize Bjorn Hansen, senior planner, for comments from the Union County staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, Manager Matthews. This is a conditional rezoning. It's called Dixon Farm. It is a request to rezone approximately 179 acres on NC 84 from the current zoning of R 40 to R 4 with conditions. This is to build an age-restricted development with the 391 units. I will review the site plan on the next slide, but these are the conditions that are associated with it. There's trails, road improvements, five-year vesting, and consistency with our unified development ordinance. This is the site plan opposite from St. John's Forest. NC 84 and Airport is to the west, just off of the screen. This development has two access points, have a creek running through it that they will cross. You have detention facilities for stormwater and then single-family housing along the interior of the site with stubouts to the south for connection if future development were to occur. Existing conditions along NC 84, you can see Weddington Point on the north side of the road, the house that is on the site, otherwise it's largely agricultural land. NC 84 is a two-lane road. In terms of development status, you can see the subdivisions to the north and to the east and west of this development. The dots indicate structure, so you can see that in some instances, these subdivisions have been platted, but the homes hadn't yet been built. Structure map is a couple of years old, so quite a few of them have since been filled in. This is a high-growth area. In terms of environmental features, again, you can see the floodplain and the creek going through the site. Otherwise, it is largely cleared. Zoning, this is, again, R 40. You see a variety of zoning districts. Some of it has the CZ. It means it was associated with a rezoning that occurred. The development, St. John's Forest, the north, is actually a smart growth development approximately 20 years ago. That did not require rezoning. And to the west, you see Creeks Landing, which is a cluster development. So there's a variety of zoning districts, but the result is typically single-family with some preserved open space. And then you have Wesley Chapel to the west, so there is municipal nearby as well. In terms of transportation, this shows the comprehensive transportation plan through CARTPO, showing that NC 84 is identified as a future multi-lane corridor. It is not funded. It's not in a STIP. It's not in their long-range plan, but without the right-of-way, it can't happen. So as a part of this development, the developer has been asked to dedicate 50 feet of right-of-way from the center line, which is the typical cross-section for a multi-lane road. The traffic counts in the area are shown. We do have a little bit more recent data, but it's essentially the same in the approximately 10,000 cars a day east of St. John's Forest and mid-teens west of St. John's Forest with Airport Road to the north. I will note that at John's Forest and NC 84, we do have an illumination project to put streetlights at this intersection because of previously identified safety concerns. That project's in the design process, and hopefully will be installed in 2024. The land use plan for the area, again, the areas in gray are municipal, so we don't make land use recommendations for them. The remainder is recommended, single-family residential, where utilities are present. This is approximately two units per acre. Where they're not present, it's one unit per acre. Schools were consulted. Their comments were based on the initial proposal, which was not age-restricted. Midway through the process, this was proposed to, this was changed to be age-restricted, so the school impacts are now essentially zero because school-aged children aren't allowed to live there. And this would be served by Sun Valley High and Middle and Rocky River Elementary. In terms of utilities, it is available to be served by Union County Water and Sewer. This would be served with gravity sewer. In terms of public feedback, three community meetings were actually held, one before the application was submitted, and then one that was required by us, and then a follow-up one based on resident questions and comments for the applicant to be able to address them. A lot of the comments were about traffic impacts, density, as well as buffering on the edges of the site. Specifically, St. John's Forest, there was questions about whether a roundabout would be appropriate at that intersection. Concerns were over its long-term viability to work as a roundabout, as well as getting the right-of-way. You can't require a developer to acquire right-of-way from an adjacent property, and in this instance, it was recommended to remain as a signalized intersection, which is what's proposed with turn lane improvements. And the enhancements that were made as a part of those community meetings were that there would be an additional turn lane exiting St. John's Forest, which would allow the residents to be able to turn left and right at the signal and not have to worry about getting backed up at the signal. In terms of municipal feedback, we consulted both Monroe and Wesley Chapel. Monroe had no comments. Wesley Chapel passed a resolution opposing the development citing density, flooding, and traffic concerns. These were similar to what the land use board's feedback was. They reviewed it last month. They had concerns about traffic as well and recommended denial on a six-to-one vote. Staff recommendation, we do note positives and negatives about developments when we present them to you. The density is higher than what's recommended in the comprehensive plan. The overall density is approximately two units per acre, but the net density is higher. It's approximately 2.7, and you asked for that breakdown in the last couple of years. The comprehensive plan, what is written, did not make that differentiation. The difference is subtracting out floodplain and other undevelopable land to create the calculation, so it is a little bit higher than the comprehensive plan would recommend. Even with the mitigation that is committed to by the applicant, there will still be more cars in the area, so there cumulatively will be more congestion. And this is nearly 200 acres of agricultural land. That will no longer be agricultural land if developed. However, the developer does propose significant mitigation for traffic impacts. They reduced it from an all-ages to an age-restricted community, which will reduce traffic by approximately half. They are committing to improvements at John's Forest, which is already a bad intersection, as well as turn lanes to get into their site, and then contributing $200,000 for us to use to assign to a nearby intersection as part of our intersection program, either at NC 84 and Potter or another adjacent intersection. And then lastly, the fact that it's an age-restricted development means it's not going to impact nearby schools. So based on those positives and negatives, we recommend approval of the rezoning. The applicant is here with their development team. I know that there are also residents here to speak, but in case you have questions of the applicant, they are prepared to present additional information.
Does the applicant wish to speak? Provide comments?
Yes, sir. The lights may go off when I start pushing buttons over here, so...
[inaudible]
Is this yours?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Walter Fields. I live in Denver, North Carolina. I'm a city planner, and I've worked in this community before, and I've always thought highly of your county motto about planned progress. I've spent my career doing that. We have our project team here tonight. As I said, I'm Walter Fields. I work with David Wiggley Homes on rezonings and development proposals. Shannon Bowling from David Wiggley is here, and he's going to have some comments later on. Mark Keim and Mason Greason are here from CEZ, our civil and environmental consultants. And Michael Wickline is here from DRG. He's our transportation consultant and worked with Bjorn and with NCDOT on the traffic studies that were done as a result of this proposal. I'm going to take just a minute and run through some images here because I think that may make it easier for us to discuss some of the details later. This is our site plan. This is 179 on 180 acres, 391 single-family detached homes on individual lots. This is an age-restricted community. That means that at least one member of every household has to be 55 years of age. There are both federal standards that dictate what we have to comply with, and David Wiggley Homes, who has built communities like this in the past, including one over on Cuthbertson Road, has additional standards in their CCNRs to make sure that that's enforced. Somebody asked at the planning board meeting, well, what would happen if somebody wanted to move in and bring a child? And we said, well, they wouldn't be able to. It's a federal requirement. It's one of the three exemptions of the Fair Housing Act, and if you say you're going to do it, then you're required to do it. We had very good meetings in the community. We had three. As Bjorn indicated, we've since had two with St. John's Forest across the way to talk about the details of their intersection and how we're going to work with them to improve their access. One of the comments that came to us very early in the process from the folks that live just to the east of the site is they really would like to see the larger lots along the eastern boundary of our project. And so this is an area that indicates where we would put the 60-foot lots. We have 50s and 60s. They were sort of interspersed, and they still are in other areas, but here, we made a commitment to make sure those were the larger lots at their request. This is an area that shows the open space on the site. You'll see down that boundary on the right-hand side, the last little colored edge there is crosshatched, and that indicates, in addition to those larger lots there, a 50-foot enhanced landscape buffer there. In the bottom part of that side, you may see a little bit of a rendering that shows a landscape plan. That chart, which is very hard to read, shows the actual specifications for the trees and shrubs that would be planted on an eight-foot berm that will go all the way down that side of the property, again, at the request of the neighbors that are joining us to the east. Bjorn talked a little bit about traffic mitigation. Traffic is a big topic everywhere. I've been doing this a long time, and you never have a... I've been doing this a long time, and you never have a meeting like this unless traffic comes up in the conversation. And part of what we're doing in this, in this rezoning is dealing with the site impacts that we create, some of which are physical on the ground, some of which apply to the whole network. And so we're adding additional turn lanes at the two entrances that we proposed. We think this development is, needs to have a second entrance because part of the property is across the creek. Makes sense to be able to connect the community together. In the addition, in addition to the right-of-way that we'll dedicate, which makes it easier to do further road widens in the future, as Bjorn mentioned in his presentation, we're also proposing and committing as part of this development to signalize the intersection at St. John's Forest Lane and our main entrance. It's, it's an area that's needed some improvement for years. This gives us an opportunity to contribute something to the community over and above just getting in and out of our site. The St. John's Forest folks were very excited about this because they have difficulty getting out of their, out of their neighborhood in the morning. Some of you may recall that there was to be another access point at the back of that site many, many years ago, but that for reasons sort of beyond everybody's control, that didn't ever happen. So all those homes now come out at a single location. We're going to actually improve their entrance. There'll still be one lane going in, but there'll be two lanes coming out. That way, if you're leaving St. John's Forest, you come up to a signalized intersection, right turns can still make a right on a red, and the left, through left will have a phase in the signal so they can get out and go in both directions. We think that's going to make a huge difference in terms of not only their accessibility, but the flow of traffic along 84. And the last thing, which is on the top of this list, is we understand, from working with Bjorn and with NC DOT, that there are a number of issues in the community in terms of transportation. There, there always are. And while their plan's being studied and revised and looked at again in terms of different improvements along the corridor, there wasn't anything far enough along to really say, well, and we'll do that lane over here, or we'll do this lane over here. Just nobody has the plans yet to do that. But Bjorn reminded us that the county often accepts contributions towards transportation projects that go to you, not to NC DOT, and then you can use that money, as you see, for it to leverage other improvements along that corridor that benefits the broader public. So those are our transportation commitments as part of this rezoning. This is a diagram of the, of the westernmost access point, so you can see how the right-of-way is wider, how the turn lanes will be constructed, and sidewalks along that street. This is down at St. For, St. John's Forest Lane, where we'll have the signalized intersection. And you see the turn lanes here and on both sides of the intersection, and spacing back to the nearest driveways to the east because we wanted to make sure that we had plenty of stacking so it wouldn't block those driveways. This is a little bit larger illustration, and you can see on the St. John's Forest Lane how the new road would be constructed, would be widened, the outbound lanes would be widened. We've had two meetings, Shannon has had two meetings with the board of directors about how we'll work with their land that's common area in their community. We're not asking that it be right-of-way dedicated to the public, but we would essentially put the roadway, the new lane where the sidewalk is now within the right-of-way, and then we'd move the sidewalk and planting strip outside the right-of-way, and it would go on an easement through their common area. And that's, that's, the details of that are in the works, but that's part of our commitment in this rezoning as well. We talked a lot about sewer at the planning board meeting. There was a lot of conversation about, well, what does this mean and how does that work? The bottom line is, we know this is an area that's in the land use plan for utilities availability in the future. The density reflects that. And we know that we can't build anything until there's actual sewer, sewer capacity there. And so this is just an acknowledgement because that seemed to be a point of confusion during the planning board discussion about how can you propose to build something when there's not capacity available, you know, right now? We understand that. There's a lot of lead time on doing a development like this, and so this is just a statement to make sure that we acknowledge to you and you are, that we are aware that sewer capacity has to be available before we can get the first building permit. It is worth noting that age-restricted communities tend to use less water and sewer per home than just a regular market-rate community would. That's not, you don't hear much about that, but I've worked with other developers on age-restricted communities, and that's one of the common facts that we find in all these communities. Again, this is the, the basic site plan. You can see the other communities that are labeled on there to the north and the west of us. We talked about, there was conversation at the planning board about density, and Bjorn pointed out in his report that the recommendation in the land use plan is two units per acre for areas with utilities. What we've come to understand is, if you looked at the densities of these various other communities, which are already there, some of which are not even completely built out yet, some which have been there for a number of years, we're about in the middle of the density range. Some of them are like 1.9, some of them are well over 3. And so we've tried to hit the middle. We're not asking for something that we think is outrageous in the context of the plan, but we think it's appropriate in the context of the community that we're proposing to build in, and I just wanted to touch on that briefly. You saw the illustrations at the, a couple of slides back here that is an aerial that shows you where the, the two access points are, one just to the west of the, of the creek, and then one opposite, John's Forest Lane. That's our main access, and it would align with their existing community access. We understand there's lots of conversation about stormwater. It was one of the few things that Wesley Chapel mentioned in their comments about this zoning case. The county has had for years and years stormwater detention requirements, and I think it's the two in the 25-year storm. And we have looked at that, and our plan is laid out in such a way that we have large areas available for stormwater detention. And if, and I want to let Mason or Mark get up here and talk about that in more detail if you have any of those questions because they're engineers, and I couldn't ever do the math to be an engineer. So we wanted to let you know that we're aware of that. Again, no impact on the school system. The, no, the, the impact in the traffic network is significantly different than a traditional single-family subdivision with kids going to school at the same time every day and folks leaving for the office the same time every day. There will be changes in the traffic flow, but as a practical matter, people in these communities, especially as they age and retire, really don't have to go out at the, in the AM and PM peak hours anymore. They have the advantage to go travel at whatever time of day they want to, and so many people do their shopping and everything else from home these days. I don't think we have a full appreciation for how that is going to impact traffic growth, not just in Union County, but, but everywhere. And again, folks in retirement tend to have a higher disposable income. They spend that money in the community. I saw a statistic one time when I was working on a project in Lincoln County called Trilogy, that each single-family home in a, in a community like this generates two to two and a half new jobs in the community. People in these communities also do a lot of volunteer work, both it's their way of giving back when they move into this community or move from one area in the community to a new area in the community. This is an example of the streetscape, the sort of homes that we're proposing to build. The planning board jumped on us pretty quickly here because they couldn't figure out how we had bushes in front of the garage door there in that house. That, of course, would be, is the model home, and that would be addressed appropriately when that home is sold to a, a new resident. These are other examples, model homes that David Weekley constructs. Each community has, they design homes for each individual community separately. There may be some common elements, but they don't have a catalog where they get one from column A and one from column B. Each, each community has its own homes, own individual designs in their homes. So sort of in closing, again, here's our site plan. You can see the immunity areas. You can see the trails. You can see the areas we have set aside for stormwater detention, which we think will, will manage the water from this site. And again, the two folks that knew, know more about it than I do are here if you have any specific questions on that. So let me stop at this point and let Shannon Bowling come up and, and offer his comments. And, well, I'll just go back to that blank slide because that, you can focus on what you want to. I'm sorry. Any, any questions of me? I'm not going anywhere. I just didn't know if there might be any now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Walter. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Shannon Bowling, and I'm the land manager with David Weekley Homes here in the Charlotte Division. Thank you for your time tonight. Want to also thank planning staff for their effort on this rezoning, and also want to thank the community for their involvement with our community meetings. We're excited to be in front of you for another opportunity in Union County for our age-restricted Encore brand. We're building it currently on Cuthbertson Road, and we feel like it's being well-received. And we have representatives here tonight, as Walter said, from the traffic team, from the land planning team, and from our civil engineering team, and we're here to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Any further questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chair.
And I'm not sure if this should be directed to the development team or possibly to our staff, and this might be something that we, you guys might have to bring back to us. But my question is regarding the zoning. So the, the request here before us is going from R-40 to R-4. And as I was reading over the proposal, one of the questions that really stuck out to me is, is how does this compare with other 55 and up deed-restricted communities within our county borders? So are these other communities also zoned R-4? Do we have any kind of comparable, you know, projects to look at? Thank you, Bjorn.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So the R-4, what that means is residential and 4,000-square-foot lots. And a lot of times, we will see those proposals, not because the applicant wants to build 4,000-square-foot lots, but because we want the reduced setback requirements of the smaller lot sizes. And there are developments inside municipalities that may have different terminology, but the, the layout is essentially the same, which is that they are smaller lots because the targeted residents don't value maintaining a large lot. And in some instances, the HOA is actually, is actually maintaining the yards for them. So in terms of the lot sizes, this is pretty typical. This is very similar to what we saw with the Encore development on, on Cuthbertson Road. We've had another rezoning that was actually a joint one with Mint Hill, right on the edge of Mecklenburg County, very similar. So when you see age-restricted developments, they behave similar to this, where you have, one, you need a, you need a critical mass to allow all of the amenities that they want to provide and pay for, but also the lot sizes that's considered attractive to the, the target audience.
Thank you, Bjorn. One further question that I have is, you know, as far as the density is concerned, so within our agenda packet, what we're, pardon me, what we were given was that the overall density was proposed at, I think it's 2.18, and then net density is around 2.71. And my question is, is how does that compare with the surrounding neighborhoods there such as like St. John's Forest? I realize that that was, you know, slightly different project, obviously, but, but as far as the density between those two, is it pretty comparable? Is it less? Is it more?
Lee and I had a good conversation about the history of St. John's Forest this very afternoon, and the, the answer is, do you want to include the undeveloped school site as a part of that calculation or not? Because without it, it's about 3.7 acres, or 3.7 units per acre. That's, that's St. John's Forest. If you include the land that was included as a part of that, it's more like 2.3. And that's because under the smart growth, smart growth provisions of that era, the base zoning for, for St. John's Forest was already R-20. So it was approximately two units per acre as the base zoning. And when you provided amenities such as a school site at no cost to the county, they, they were given a density bonus, which allowed them to go up to approximately 2.25. So that's, that's directly across the street. To the northwest, Weddington Point is a little bit higher, I believe. I'm going to say it's, I'm going to say it's around 2.3, 2.4. And to the immediate west, the Creek's Landing is less than two. It's about a little less than 1.5. So it, some of it's a function of how much developable land there is. Some of it's a function of the era that they developed under, but at the end of the day, they're all single-family residential neighborhoods with open space provided as a part of them, but their density does vary a little bit. And like Mr. Bowling said, this falls in the middle of all of those developments.
Thank you, Bjorn. One further question from me, sorry about that. If we can go back to the sewer numbers?
That would be their slide shown.
Okay, sorry.
That's fine.
So my question is, okay, so what we're figuring here is we'll require a capacity reservation of 112, 813 gallons per day, and that's based off 391 single-family homes. And let's see, Mr. Fields, I think, brought this up to our attention. But my question is, is what are we basing the calculations here on per home? So the comment was made that, that these homes may actually use less sewer per day than a typical single-family residential. Do we have those calculations? Is it based off of the standard that we typically?
Yeah, it's actually about 280, almost 290 gallons per, per unit, which is a typical single-family residence, not what you would consider a age-restricted.
Okay. So it's safe to say then that we are essentially, we're being a little conservative in our estimates here. Okay. Thank you.
I had a comment about that, going back to sewer. In this packet tonight, I know that the community often talks about whether we do or do not have sewer capacity in the county, and there's been a lot of misinformation over the past year and a half, couple of years. And in tonight's packet, I just want to confirm, this proposed subdivision would go to 12-mile?
That's correct.
Okay. In tonight's packet of information, 12-mile is currently at 68% capacity. That's the actual flow. And if the permitted projects were to go through all at the same time, that would be 88% capacity. So I, I think it's very important for us to start acknowledging and putting information to the public that the sky is not falling. We're not out of sewer capacity. We are being proactive and taking measures to expand 12-mile over the next couple of years, and a lot of R and R at Grassy Branch and Crooked Creek. And so I know that the first gentleman mentioned, you know, concerns about sewer, and you, when the actual is at 68%, I would say we're not out of sewer. So I think that's very important information for us to start talking about publicly instead of Union County being out of sewer because we're clearly not. The second comment I wanted to make, and the last one I'll make about this project, is we've had a lot of constituents within the Wesley Chapel municipality, and I know that this project is not within Wesley Chapel, but I would like to ask staff to, to go back and see where the Wesley Chapel neighborhoods that have come to us about flooding and storm drainage, and, and let's do a flood analysis on this particular project, you know, taking into consideration the retention ponds that, you know, we saw throughout the plans, but just verifying the Wesley Chapel municipalities that have, that are having storm drainage issues, that staff is currently investigating. Are there possible solutions out there? And make, making sure that this one just outside of the municipality would not potentially add, add to that, that challenge.
Well, we have a lot, we have a lot of people here who, who can help answer that question, but we want to make sure we get you the right information because honestly, the development team here for the applicant is going to be doing a lot of that work. So we have, I think, Manager Matthews first has some information about where we stand with some existing studies.
No, actually, I, I know that staff had talked about this and possibly with a developer. I was hoping that you guys may shed some light on some additional information that may be able to be worked through and, and talk about that. Thank you. No, actually, I know that staff have talked about this, and possibly with a developer. I was hoping that you guys may shed some light on some additional information that may be able to be worked through and talk about that. Thank you.
I'm going to just highlight on the PowerPoint, back to our site plan. And we did have a chance to have a conversation about storm sewer. I've got Mason Greason up here, our civil engineer, to help us talk about that. But you could see on the western side of the property, we're proposing our stormwater ponds. We have not engineered them yet. These are preliminary. With the information we were asked about earlier today and on Friday, to study the effect of our projected development on the stream, currently, it's a two- and 25-year flood event that we have to control in those ponds?
Correct.
And what we would like to suggest is to increase our capacity in these stormwater ponds as a condition of our rezoning. We'd like to increase the capacity to control the 100-year flood. So, we feel like if we can increase the capacity of our basins, we've got enough room, we've got enough green space to, I mean, that's something that we feel like can, number one, certainly reduce impact. I mean, if it's a 1,000-year storm, we can't control that. But take it up to the 100-year flood is what we're proposing. I'm gonna let Mason jump in here before I butcher it anymore.
Thank you. Yeah, so I ran the analysis this afternoon, really on the Wesley Chapel area, which I'm obviously very familiar with. This is tributary three that you see here of the East Fork branch, which actually ultimately dumps into the 12-mile. And Wesley Chapel's complaints are not wrong. Obviously, they're seeing those issues there. So the requirements that most all developments, I believe since 2008, of requirement is either with the state or the local municipality, one being Union County, is typically for the 10- and 25-year storm events. As we all know, in the past five years, Union County and the area has seen some larger storm events happen in those cases. The requirement for the larger storm events for 50 and 100-year, they have no requirement to meet a predeveloped or be lower than a predeveloped condition. We feel that this is probably contributing to that issue that is there. That's why we're trying to offer commitment of detaining and releasing the, going over and above the requirements set forth.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick comment. First of all, you know, thank you. I appreciate that, because that's a major concern of mine, too. You know, we have heard from residents in other parts of the county where, I mean, this is a significant issue. And, you know, the last thing that we would want is to repeat any kind of mistakes that were made in previous projects. And I think that we all, you know, have to acknowledge that when you change the landscape of the land, then that can have impacts on stormwater and flooding. So, I appreciate the offer, and that's certainly something that we will consider as we look into this further. But again, this is a significant issue, and the last thing that we would want is to approve something like this, and then have some sort of an impact there on a well-traveled Weddington Road or 84, and then also have a negative impact to the residents there across the street at St. John's. So, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? We do have two citizens who have signed up to speak in regards to this public hearing. Each speaker must address the board from the lectern and begin their remarks by giving their names, stating whether they are residents of Union County, indicating the municipality within which they reside, if any. Each speaker will have three minutes to make remarks. A tone may sound at the conclusion of your remarks. A speaker may not yield any of his or her time to another speaker. Speakers shall limit their remarks to the subject of this public hearing. Speakers may leave written comments and/or supporting documents, if any, with the clerk to the board. Our first speaker is Rodney Helms.
Thank you for letting me come talk tonight. I am a neighbor of the project here, and want to come out and speak about my concerns and speak of disapproval of the site. Not a good speaker, and I changed my number before I sat here listening to you guys, so bear with me. So, right now, Villa Wesley Chapel, you guys know they haven't approved it. The land use committee did not approve it. They also said it did not go against, it went against Union County Comprehensive Plan. So if we pay for the Comprehensive Plan while we're trying to go against it with all these other things ahead of us? I'm not against growth. Build it what it is. I don't know what the benefit of the community to rezone this. I know you asked a minute ago about what are the neighbors around it similar to, on that density? Really, I don't know the relevance of that, other than just trying to get to education. We're talking about rezoning this. Keep it to the current zoning, so you'll have less of an impact on the community. So, we also got two road improvement projects coming up, one on Rocky River Road and 84, one on Wesley Chapel and 84, and Potter's Road and 84. Why don't we get some of these projects finished and alleviate some of the traffic we have? If you go 84 towards Wesley Chapel, you'll see how it backs up in the mornings and the evenings. So, I would keep road controlled until we can get some of these, I don't, built up around us. The sewer, the runoff. How many times in the past year has school had to get out early, leave early because they worry about kids on school buses, the bridges that flood in the area? That's more prominent in the last couple of years. My wife's a teacher. I've seen it. If, essentially, I'm an engineer by training, too. If all their calculations were right, we wouldn't have these flooding problems. So, make sure we have that understood. That weekly home right now can do 391 family homes, 782 cars, two cars per person. St. John's is 638 houses, two cars per person is 1276. That's 2,058 cars coming down to Weddington Road. And most of them, we come out right across from St. John's Forest. The traffic mitigation they did there, sounds great, but we are gonna be adding the traffic to an already major congestion area. They're already doing a lighting project because of the issue at nighttime and the One thing coming with the land use thing, I thought was pretty interesting, says Union County is 90% residential, and I believe Bjorn confirmed that's about right. And was that healthy for a county to be 90% residential? Didn't get a definite answer, but the consensus was, they don't think that number's most healthy for a county. I mean, commercial, industrial, different farmland. So, would like for you guys maybe educate us on that, where we really are, and that'll be it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Bill McGurk.
Mr. Chairman, board members, I'm a, Bill McGurk, live on Crown Forest Lane. It's not really within five miles of this project, but I own land with my family that's within a short distance of this property. We own farmland. And I am a small number of people with chairman here, born and raised here. But the concerns I have is, I've served on the Board of Adjustment at the time we were doing our 2050 Plan. And being a family that owns farmland, we were concerned with making sure that we tried to keep the farmland, and also, if we were gonna do R-40, let's keep it R-40. So, we've approved a plan, trying to keep from having high-density housing. And I know when I go to the polls to vote, the one thing I look at with regards to all of you is, are you in favor of high-density housing? If you are, I don't vote for you. I've watched Union County, since I was born in 1955, go from primarily agricultural land to now a lot of high-density housing. I travel 84 and Rocky River constantly, and I can tell you, I even drove Rocky River, driving the chairman's school bus when he was in elementary school, when there was no traffic on that road. But now, especially during the day when you're going to and from work, traffic has backed up. About a mile down the road towards Monroe from this project, the city has already approved another housing development, approximately 300 to 400 houses, that's gonna increase our traffic problems on that road, too. I noted in your agenda package that Wesley Chapel was concerned with traffic mainly towards the Wesley Chapel side. My concern is to the east, towards Monroe, where we have a lot of traffic. In the city of Monroe, just approximately two, two and a half miles, where Highway 75 and MLK are there, are building houses, constantly, high-density houses in several locations there. So, our population has increased, our traffic has increased, there's been no improvements in that area whatsoever. You'll sit at that stoplight at Rocky River and Highway 84 three or four times, especially in the morning and the afternoons, before you ever get through that traffic light. There's no turn lanes. And I note that there's a lot of things that they're talking about doing directly in front of this location, but there's nothing with regards towards Potter's Road and Highway 84 and Rocky River. And I have a lot of concerns about the traffic in that area, especially with the school being so close. I would ask you to stick with what the Comprehensive Plan calls for. It's R-40. Let's leave it at R-40. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. I will now close the public hearing. The next item on the agenda, or the next item?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Just the board. So, I know there were some questions here, and what I would ask is that, obviously, the board does not make decisions typically at this meeting, and I'm not asking to make a decision. I do think it would be appropriate if you would direct staff to work for the developer to come back with additional information related to the stormwater question. I believe that they can then work on that, not specifically state what that is, but have them work together so they can bring you back some additional information for stormwater. Would the board be willing to entertain that?
Yes.
I wouldn't mind having someone make that motion, so we could direct staff for that. I'd appreciate that.
I'll make that motion to ask staff to address the flooding concerns and work with David Weekly Holmes to bring us back some more information around their retention pond proposal that they made here tonight, and flooding issues. Even though this is outside of a municipality and within our jurisdiction, I would like to know where this project is in relations to the Wesley Chapel communities that have come to us about flooding, to ensure that this project will not add to those flooding issues. So that's my motion.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I will now close the, I will now close the public hearing. The next item is consideration of the agenda and consent agenda. First, if there's no objection, I will add an item to the end of the business agenda concerning authorization of an agreement with the county manager and the county attorney. If there are no other objections to this agenda adjustment, I'll ask if there are any other revisions requested to the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I'd like to pull item 24-160, the contract for childcare subsidy eligibility, so that Ashley Lance can make a presentation to us tonight in business.
All right. We'll pull that, move that to the business agenda. To the business agenda.
Mr. Chairman. I would like to make a motion to add an item to the business agenda regarding asking our staff to review and potentially revise the county's policies regarding Union County agricultural and event complex, as well as Union County parks and similar county facilities offered for use, please.
Any questions on the vice chairman's motion? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. Motion carries. We're now at the business portion of our agenda. The first item?
Mr. Chair, you may wish to take a vote on the consent agenda as amended.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we will take a vote on the consent agenda as amended. All in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.
We're now at the business, we're now at the business portion of our agenda. The first item of business is item 24180, consideration of appointment to fill the vacancy and the membership of the Union County Board of Commissioners. Before board discussion of this item, I would like to recognize County Attorney Jason Kay for comments.
Mr. Chairman, I will be brief. As everyone is aware, we experienced another vacancy in the membership of the board upon the resignation of Commissioner Richard Helms. This is the second time we've dealt with a vacancy within the last year after a long period of not having a vacancy. So, the drill may be fairly familiar to everyone at this point. But as you are aware, pursuant to General Statute 153A-27, the county is required to consult with, in this case, the Executive Committee of the Republican Party regarding its recommendation for a member to fill that seat. That did occur on March the 14th, and we have received a letter notifying us that Mr. Clancy Balkum was the nominee by the party to fill that position. That having been done, the board is now ready to take up the matter if it so chooses. It is under no obligation to consider any particular member, but it may wish to do so this evening. And you are, you have fulfilled your statutory requirements prior to making that appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Kay. We also have the Republican Party Chair, Allison Powers, here. Ms. Powers, if you'd like to step up to the lectern and speak with us, now's the time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. My name is Allison Powers. I'm chair of the Union County Republican Party. And good evening to the Union County and the Board of County Commissioners and the Board of County Commissioners staff. Thank you for letting me speak on the behalf of our Union County Republican Party candidate, Clancy Balkum, who we are recommending to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Commissioner Richard Helms. We wish Commissioner Helms the best of health in the future and whatever he endeavors to take on. So, we've already talked about the statutory requirements, so I will skip that part. And we did have our meeting last week on Thursday. We did combine it with our county convention, and we were able to complete that process. The joint meeting was noticed on our website on February the 27th, and the meeting was held last Thursday, March 14th, at Sun Valley High School. Clancy Balkum was the sole candidate to appear at the meeting. He was elected by acclamation on a resounding voice vote. Clancy is a proud native of Union County. He is a business owner in Union County, someone who signs the checks. He is well-versed in one of the main businesses of Union County, which is agriculture. I have come to know Clancy through the Union County Republican Party over the past five or so years. I am proud to present him as our candidate to fill the vacancy on the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As noted by County Attorney Jason Kay, we may now consider filling the vacancy on the board. I will accept nominations for filling the vacancy, and we will consider each nomination as received. If a nominee receives a majority vote, they will be the person appointed to fill the vacancy.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to make a motion to appoint Clancy Balkum to the vacancy on our board, filling the remainder of former Commissioner Richard Helms' term.
Any discussion on the appointment of Clancy Balkum to the Board of County Commissioners? Hearing none. Are there any other nominees? This is a quiet crowd. Hearing none, we will vote on the appointment of Mr. Clancy Balkum to the Board of County Commissioners. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. The motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Balkum, and welcome to the board. Because of this appoint, because this appointment is effective immediately, we will ask that you come forward, take your oath of office, and then join us here on the dice as a member of the board for the remainder of the meeting. The next matter of business is item two-four-one-six-zero, Contract Childcare Subsidy Eligibility. This item was moved from the consent agenda to the business portion of the agenda. I believe Commissioner Merrill asked for more information on this item, so I'll turn it over to her.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This particular item was of great interest to me when it came up on the agenda for a couple of different reasons. First off, I wanted to learn more, so thank you very much for being here to explain this to me and to the rest of us. I had a couple of questions this morning that couldn't be answered, and they said you were the one with all the answers.
I hope I am.
So, for this topic. So, it said that Union County Department of Social Services is going to transition to privatizing childcare subsidy eligibility services and creating a call center.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I am going to have a lot of questions around that, and I'm just going to hand it off to you and introduce this concept to us. What is, what is the current business function? How many positions are involved? And why are we moving to a privatizing childcare? And when did, is this a new program? Or, you know, how long has this been going on?
I would love to. I was actually really excited that you wanted me to come tonight and speak to you about the program. I get a little too happy about sharing about all the stuff that we do at DSS, so thank you for having me come tonight. I'm going to start off just explaining what childcare subsidy program is, and then after that, then we'll get into the reasons why we're looking to contract that out and start a call center in DSS. Is that good? Okay. If you have questions as I go, stop me. If I get to going too fast, or I get excited, tell me to calm down. Okay?
Well, I'm excited to hear.
Okay, good. So, childcare subsidy is actually one of our least talked-about programs, and I think it is probably one of the most fantastic, because what it does is it takes subsidized funds that we receive, and those dollars come from federal and state dollars, including some Smart Start dollars that come from the state. It takes those funds and allows parents or guardians who are struggling, they're working, you have to be working or in school, okay, in order to qualify. So, they're working, or they're going to school trying to get a better job, and it allows us to provide them some assistance while they go to school or are working to pay for childcare. So, I don't know if any of you have put kids into childcare lately, but it is astronomical, the prices. So, it helps those families who are struggling so that they can pay for it. The parents and guardians who do have children that receive childcare subsidy, they do have to pay a portion of the cost, so they do have some buy-in to the program, which I think is really needed. It helps them to understand the give and take of the subsidy program. I've said before, it's funded through state funds and federal funds and some county funds. The majority of it, though, comes from federal and state funds. Those state funds are through Smart Start. You may know the Alliance for Children here in Union County. They grant us money each year to help pay for the program. In order for a family to qualify, they have to meet certain needs, one of which I've already stated is they have to be either working or in school. Another way that they could qualify is if they are, or their family is involved with child protective services. And child protective services has said, we think this family could benefit and stabilize by receiving child, childcare subsidy funds. Another way is to meet the developmental needs of children, so if they have a special developmental need, then they could potentially qualify for childcare subsidy. They have to eat, meet income guidelines, and that is based off federal poverty guidelines. I can pass this around if you're curious to look at it. But I can tell you that for children age zero to five, the family must be at two-hundred percent of the federal poverty limit. If they are age six to twelve, then they must be at least one-hundred-and-thirty-three percent of the federal poverty limit. So, that's how they can qualify. It has been in existence in North Carolina since nineteen sixty-four. It is a mandated program for DSS, so we have to provide this, this program according to state and federal policies. So, we try to do our best at making sure that those who need it do receive it. There are occasions, though, where we have to have a waiting list just based upon the funds that we receive. We do our best to balance the waitlist with the monies that we receive, federal, both federal and state. The county funds that we use is just going towards staff support. All of the funds for actually, like, running the program that go into the subsidy are federal and state funds. So, now that you know a little bit about childcare subsidy, does anybody have any questions about how the program works?
So, you actually answered some of the questions I had. So, the parent or parents have to be working or in school. What happens if they drop out of school and you don't find out, or?
So, they are required to let us know of any change notice, and that's for any of our subsidy programs, from childcare to Medicaid to food stamps. They are supposed to let us know in a certain amount of time if there is a change in the household. If they lose their job and they're not going to school anymore, then they will lose their childcare subsidy.
Okay. And you mentioned that they have to pay a certain percentage, but I didn't hear you say if it's like ten percent?
It's ten percent.
It is ten percent?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, it was a good guess.
It was really good. We're hiring. Just throwing that out there.
That might be a better guess. So, we'll talk.
Yes, ma'am.
So, let's see. So, how many positions are currently under the existing model, and in order to go to, to convert this to a call center, how many positions approximately are, are in this package? Because you did say that most of the dollars are state and federal, but, you know, the financial impact that we're voting on tonight is two-point-four million dollars over five years, so that's not a small amount of money, and that's why I wanted to learn more about it.
No, that makes sense.
Because, you know, two-point-four million dollars, to me, is a lot of money.
To me, it's a lot of money. So, the easiest way to explain that is that the county will see a net zero impact. We have seven positions currently within childcare subsidy services. What we plan to do is when we contract that out to our vendor, which is what you're voting on tonight, the vendor, those federal and state dollars will be used to pay for that vendor, which is the contract amount that you referenced, the two-point-four. We will use our call center, which I'll explain in just a second. We will be able to submit those positions for reimbursement differently, because they're going to be working majority of our Medicaid services, and so we get reimbursed at a seventy-five percent reimbursement rate for those. So, where we already had dollars allocated to pay for staff support within childcare subsidy, those dollars we're going to use to pay for them at the child, at the call center, but we're actually going to realize a little bit, little bit, of a savings there, because we'll be able to be reimbursed at a seventy-five percent level where we haven't been before.
Okay.
If all of that is clear as mud, I did my job.
You're doing, you're actually doing, you're clearing the mud for me. So, two questions I have along those comments, and staff may have to help me with this one. So, since we're converting to a call center, is there going to be any capital dollars, you know, to convert the space, you know, from whatever it is today to a call center?
No, ma'am. A call center just, it changes the type of position they're going to be in, so they will be at a desk answering a phone, but there's no facility that they need to operate out of, that they're not already operating out of.
And Ashley, would you mind just kind of explaining why, one of the reasons we are shifting to this call center? Yes, absolutely.
Would love to. Thank you for the water. So, let's talk about the call center real quick, and I think it might mesh those two ideas. So, I'm going to give you a little bit of a history lesson and then bring you into present day and why we're doing the call center. So, in early twenty, twenty-twenty-three, North, the state of North Carolina settled the Franklin v. Kinsley lawsuit, and that was regarding Medicaid beneficiaries and their access to services. As part of that settlement, there were new rules put in place for social service agencies that said how we had to answer phone calls, track phone calls, handle who was hung up on, who was sent to voicemail. Do they have a way to leave a voicemail? There was a ton of different rules that were put in place because of this lawsuit. I'm sure our attorney could probably give an even better explanation of that, but that is the layman's explanation. The state has also implemented secret shopper phone calls that are related to this suit, so they will call and make sure that we have these things in place. The second thing, there's three big reasons why we're going to be leading to the call center. The second thing is that NC Medicaid expansion began on December first. Because of North Carolina Medicaid expansion, we anticipated an increase of approximately ten to eleven thousand new Medicaid recipients just in Union County. The, the board was very gracious and allotted twelve new positions to social services this past year. Grateful for that. We've been able to get those filled, and we're working to get those people trained on the floor. We weren't able to get all of them trained by the time it began on December first, but we're pretty darned close. The third reason is that we have seen a thirty percent increase in food nutrition applicants over last year, and actually, that was over the last quarter. Over last year, we seen a hundred percent increase. This is something we didn't even think about, and when I tell you that, you're going to think, well, that wasn't very smart, and I know that now becomes hindsight's twenty-twenty. But, the state didn't see it either, so there's that. When we implemented, implemented Medicaid expansion on December first, we encouraged the entire state of North Carolina to go online and apply for benefits. Right beside applying for Medicaid benefits is food nutrition benefits. We didn't even think about the fact that those people who are struggling may also not have known previously that they could apply for food nutrition benefits, so they have started. We've also seen a tremendous increase in inflation in the cost of food. So, I think those two things are really what we've, why we've seen our food stamp numbers increase. So, for those three main reasons are why we feel like we need a call center in Union County, it's going to be focused only on economic services, which is Medicaid and food nutrition services, also childcare subsidy. They'll be able to answer those calls and get them to the right person. Our current phone system doesn't have the capability to capture the data that we need. This past year, we went at social services and economic services. We transitioned to Zoom phones, because those we can use from anywhere when we're working remotely or in the office, and they also allow us to run reports so that we can track the information that the state has required as part of Franklin versus Kinsley. I do know, I'll give the county a shout-out, our IT folks are working right now and doing us phone studies, so we should get an updated, better-equipped phone system in the next couple of years. I'm sure they'll bring that to y'all, but for now, we're able to use Zoom phones to meet the new rules of the settlement. All of that to say, we are hoping, which is what we have put forth to y'all tonight, to start a contract with Metrics IQ on April first, twenty-twenty-four. This will allow us to take those seven positions that we had used for childcare subsidy and move those to handle all of those three major things I told you about through the call center at no additional cost to the county. So, you will not see an increase in our budget for that reason this year. It will, we'll be able to pay this two-point-four million over the next three, and actually, that's over the next three plus two years, because we can add two more years onto the contract. So, over the next five years, we have that covered. We have our current outlay for the seven positions that we're going to transition to the call center. It's going to make the work that we do a little easier on our staff is, is honestly the last reason. My staff are very important to me. I believe I have the best county staff in the county, no offense other county directors, but they really put in the work, and they're doing, doing work for people who find themselves in situations where they don't know where else to turn, where really a safety net. And so, this will help to pull some of that work off of our caseworkers, because right now, do I have a couple more minutes? Am I good? Okay. Right now, we're functioning the same way that we functioned thirty years ago, when we would get paper applications. We now have caseworkers who are getting paper applications, they're seeing walk-ins, they're getting phone applications, we now have the internet, so they're getting internet applications, and on top of all that, we get phone calls of people who are saying, hey, you're working too slow and you haven't got my application done yet. And so, we have to answer those in a timely fashion. Customer service is most important to us. This will help us pull just a little bit off of our caseworkers so that our call center can answer those phone calls, go ahead and handle the questions. Maybe they have a change, maybe they lost their, their job, or they moved. That call center can go ahead and handle that and keep it off of our caseworkers so that they can get the application processed and get people their benefits.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I think, so it said the two, two-point-four million dollars is an estimate. It's an estimate, you know, for five years.
Yes.
And I think one of my concerns and why I wanted to have this open discussion is just like maybe the state didn't anticipate the number of people, you know, having nutrition needs when they expanded Medicare. What are the chances that because the state opened this up, that, that Union County may be needing three million dollars, five million dollars, and that that number could go up? So, that, that was one thing that I wanted to have a conversation about. Um, so that, that was one thing that I wanted to have a conversation about. Um, I wanted to, to see, the one thing that really hasn't been clarified for me is when a parent needs childcare, is there a list of, uh, county-approved childcares just for this program? Or is the subsidy for the parent to choose any childcare, or are they limited?
They, they are limited to an extent. It has to be a, a four or five-star childcare center. We're not going to allow kids to go into centers that aren't, um, as highly starred or highly rated as those. Um, and then they have to be a participant in the program. The majority of four and five-star centers are participants in the program. So they don't really run into many obstacles when finding, when finding childcare centers that accept the subsidy. And the subsidy is paid directly to the childcare center, not to the, to the family.
Nice. Um, the last question I have, I've really learned a lot.
Good.
So thank you. Since I come from an education background, I know that, for example, Union County Public Schools, their after-school program is an enterprise fund. And they charge a fee based on what the program costs.
Right.
So I was just curious if this type of subsidy helps a parent of a school-age student with after-school care, or is after-school completely different than a, a daycare, like zero to five?
Yeah, it does assist with that. We, they have, there's different payment, pay structures. Actually, different qualifications for the family. So I mentioned on the income guidelines, um, parents who have kids zero to five, they get to go up to the 200% federal poverty limit to qualify. Parents who have kids six to 12, it only goes up to 133%, but they still can qualify and receive after-school care.
Okay.
Yep.
Perfect. So yeah, we were talking about daycare, but I was wondering how that played into a school-age student.
Yes, it's, it's good for both.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Um, thank you, Ashley. Really, really appreciate that. You've given us a lot of information, which is good information. Um, I just really had just two short questions. So you mentioned 75% reimbursement. Um, is that a combination of federal dollars and state dollars, or is it all state? So it's all federal?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and then the, the county portion, you said that, uh, that goes through the Alliance for Children. Do I have that mixed up?
That's the state portion. It goes through Alliance for Children. Smart Start funds, uh, are where our state dollars, so it's state dollars allocated through the state budget that then go through Smart Start and then are dispersed to each of the county subsidy programs.
Essentially to pay their portion.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions from Ms. Lance? Anyone like to make a motion?
I will. I would like to authorize, I would like to authorize the county manager to, one, negotiate and execute an agreement substantially consistent with this agenda item. Two, exercise any renewal or extension term options set forth in the agreement. And three, terminate the agreement if deemed in the best interest of the county, each in the county manager's discretion for, um, a contract on childcare subsidy eligibility.
Any discussion on Commissioner Merrill's motion? All in favor of the motion indicate by aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley.
The next item on the agenda was added to the agenda concerning a review of county facility policies discussion. Commissioner, or I'm sorry, Vice Chairman Helms asked for this item to be added, so I'll now turn it over to him.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so I asked for this item to be added because in light of the, the board's recent discussions regarding our, um, facility use policy, um, I, I wanted to be able to make a motion to direct staff to review and consider revision to the other facility use policies governing county-controlled facilities and spaces like the Ag Center, um, as well as Union County Parks, and bring those types of facilities in better alignment with, uh, with the, uh, facility use draft that we've been discussing and will soon be voting on. Um, so if it's prudent at this time, I'll just go ahead and make that motion to direct staff to review and consider revision, um, to other facility use policies governing county-controlled facilities and spaces such as Union County Ag Center. Um, uh, let's see, this, the Agriculture and Event Complex License and Policy and Union County Park Rules to bring them in better alignment.
Any discussion on Vice Chairman Helms' motion? Hearing none. All in favor of, of the motion indicate by aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman? There was an item regarding, uh, there was an item regarding the Wesley Chapel Fire Service that I think we skipped over to deal with those other two items.
All right, this is item number 24190, Wesley Chapel Fire District Expansion. I'll recognize Patrick Nylund, Deputy County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're here tonight to look at a proposed, uh, fire district expansion. And this comes at the request of the town of Weddington. Currently, Wesley Chapel provides fire service to three separate fire service districts. Uh, Wesley Chapel Fire Service District, the Municipal, uh, District of Weddington, and the Providence Rural Fire District. Uh, Weddington operates a municipal district, but not in the traditional sense that Monroe does, where they have their own stations, they have their own people, they have their own apparatus. They contract with Wesley Chapel, um, for that service. So they, they don't have their own employees, they don't have their own capital, they contract for that service. Uh, Weddington has requested that Union County roll the municipal district back into the Wesley Chapel District. If the board is willing to consider that, it makes sense at the same time to roll what is the remainder of the Providence Rural District, and I have some maps here in a second that illustrates it, um, back into it. Providence is a legacy of the department that used to provide service to the town of Weddington before Weddington contracted with Wesley Chapel. When Weddington contracted Wesley Chapel, it left three very small areas of Providence that were left over that because it was so small, Wesley Chapel also picked up that at that point. So that's why they're providing fire service to all three of those areas. Um, this would, this would simplify things a lot for Wesley Chapel. Right now, they are required to keep three separate books, they have three separate response areas, and it creates some, uh, confusion in both bookkeeping and dispatching. The map you're seeing here is the current Wesley Chapel Fire District. You can see it incorporates most of Wesley Chapel, all of Marvington, and all of Marvin and a lot of unincorporated Union County. It does have a little bit of Indian Trail in the northwest corner. This is the existing Providence Rural. So this is what was left over of the larger Providence District. And you'd see down in the lower left, um, there's some unincorporated Union County. And then in the upper right, there's Stallings and Indian Trail. In Stallings, there's two vacant properties, and in Indian Trail, there's about 30 homes. And then this is the current, uh, Weddington Municipal Service District. So this is the city limits for the town of Weddington. By combining the districts, you would have this. It's a, it's a fairly large district, but it just incorporates those three separate distinct districts into one Wesley Sap, Wesley Chapel Service District. If the board did want to move forward with this, um, you would have to adopt a resolution at the next meeting. That would start off a series of items that need to happen. The board would have to make findings, we'd have to generate a map, similarly the one you just saw showing what that district looked like. We'd have to mail individual notice to all the people within that district that are getting incorporated. Uh, when we formed new districts a few years ago, we were able to notice by publication. So we were able to put in the paper that we were creating these fire districts. When you're expanding a district, the law is silent on that. So we have interpreted that to mean that we have to notify each individual property owner of the proposed change, which, um, it sounds burdensome and it, it, it's a lot of people, but it's a fairly simple process because of the way our tax department already has that set up for tax bills. Um, we would then hold a public hearing on the proposed district. We have to receive municipal consent from Weddington, Indian Trail, and Stallings. Uh, Weddington has preemptively done that. That's kind of what's kicking off this discussion. They have passed that resolution to allow us to collect that fire tax within the village of, uh, or the town of Weddington. Stallings and Indian Trail, I've talked to both of their managers, explained what was happening, and they are prepared to take that to their board. They did prior give us approval to collect that tax for the Providence District. So we don't anticipate there'd be any issue. It's the same fire department, it'd be the same tax rate, same process. It's just a, a different fire department that's providing that, or fire district, rather. Um, you would adopt a resolution that would establish that district. At the same time, you would abolish the existing Providence District, and you would set a tax rate as part of the budget process like you do, um, for all the other fire departments in the county. Uh, so, so again, this is to have a conversation with you all to see if you're interested. From a staff standpoint, we think it, we think it makes a lot of sense. It's the same fire department, providing the same fire service. Um, it, it, it's easier to explain to citizens that they're within one fire district, not three being served by the same department. Um, from a bookkeeping standpoint and a response standpoint, we just think it makes sense to clean this up, assuming the board is interested in taking up that.
Any questions for Deputy Manager Nylund?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Um, Patrick, I, you know, this is not the first time we've, we've gotten some information on this.
Yes, sir.
And I may have asked the same question, so you'll have to forgive me if I did. Uh, is there any concern about Wesley Chapel being able to provide this service?
There is not. Since they're already providing it through that municipal agreement, um, they don't need new stations, they don't need new equipment, they don't need new staff. It would be a very easy, uh, transition into a singular, uh, fire service area.
So we're not talking about any kind of capital investment at this point?
I, I say that not, not to incorporate this district. As part of Stephen's budget every year, there are requests for capital and personnel, um, but it would not be related to this. It would be related to just normal operations, increased call volume, aging equipment, that sort of thing.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any further questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Williams. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, does this process begin with adoption of a resolution?
It does.
Okay.
It, it begins and ends with a resolution. The resolution kicks off the, um, the reports that need to be generated, the map, the notice that needs to be mailed out. And then the end, there's a resolution to actually adopt the district.
Okay. And Weddington's already passed a resolution?
The Weddington's resolution is different than the ones we passed, but their resolution gives us consent to collect tax within their municipality.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Um, is there any reason why we can't start this process tonight by adopting a resolution?
You don't have the resolution in front of you. I do have a draft. It was not distributed as part because it was fairly late in the week before it was done. Um, it's fairly standard if you want, but you haven't seen it. Um, and, and there's no reason we can't wait until the next meeting. We have already done a lot of the legwork in anticipation that you may adopt it at the next meeting. Um, so there's nothing to prevent you from doing it tonight, but we could also wait until you actually have a chance to see what's in it.
Um, is there any sense of urgency that's been communicated by Weddington on this? Or is this something that you feel like, um, you know, we can wait till the next meeting to adopt?
We can wait till the next meeting. It, this can't go into effect until the beginning of the fiscal year. Um, we have enough time to do that, even if we wait till the next meeting. Uh, there is a lot that needs to happen, but we, we're comfortable that if you pass that resolution and it'd probably be under consent at the next meeting, that we will still have plenty of time to get this done.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Merrill.
I have a question. So along the same, um, line of questions, um, before you bring the, the draft resolution back to us, will you need Indian Trail and Stallings to do a similar resolution than Weddington? Do you have to have those two pieces to bring it back to us?
Not the first resolution. Before we can adopt the district at the end, which is the very last step, they will need to give consent. But for this first part, we do not need that from those two towns.
Okay.
Any, Vice Chair?
I, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, but one last thing, Patrick. Um, so, so where, where would we need those resolutions in this process from the other two municipalities? Would it be, uh, let's see, I'm assuming before we have any kind of mailed notice, or?
Ideally, it's before the public hearing is held. I, it can run concurrently. We can be seeking those, uh, approvals while it's being advertised, but ideally before we hold that public hearing, which has to be four weeks after those initial reports and maps are adopted, um, that, that's when we would have to get those. We could not approve, or I'd say we could approve it, we just wouldn't be able to collect the tax within those, that district for those two municipalities unless they gave that consent.
Okay. Well, I think that there's a general, at least from what I'm seeing at least tonight, I, I think there's a general, um, consensus here that, you know, we'd like to see something back at our next meeting. Um, so do we need a, a motion to, to initiate that?
As, as long as there's a favorable response to this, we will plan to put it in the next agenda. And in between, we will reach out to Stallings and Indian Trail again, uh, deliver your intention to take this up at the next meeting and try to get on their agendas as soon as we can with the municipal consent resolutions.
Okay.
I think that would be good, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you all.
The next business agenda item is regarding consideration of agreements with the county manager and the county attorney. I'll now, now invite someone to make a motion to authorize the chair to execute those agreements.
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman Helms.
Yes, sir. I'll make the motion to authorize the board chair to execute agreements between Union County and the, the county manager as well as the county attorney.
Any, any discussion on Vice Chairman Helms' motion? All in favor of the motion indicate by aye.
Aye.
Thank you, sir. I'll now recognize County Manager Brian Matthews for his comments.
I have no comments tonight. Thank you very much.
It's now time, it's now time for the commissioner's comments, and I'm not going to let the new commissioner, I don't want him to have to go first right off the bat. So I'll start down on this end. Uh, first of all, congratulations, Commissioner Balkum. Uh, secondly, I want to thank our staff that always does a great job. And of course, all the county employees, our firefighters, law enforcement officers, our EMS workers. Uh, thanks for all the people who come and comment at the meeting. Um, I just appreciate everything that this board does, and I'll pass it on to Vice Chairman Helms.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, yeah, there, there's a lot to be thankful for. Um, we've got, um, great staff here, certainly appreciate staff, um, as well as Ms. Lance being here kind of on short notice to talk to us about that one item. Um, I think that that was very beneficial for the board to, to hear, um, all the details about that. Uh, thank you to all the speakers that took the time to, uh, come here tonight to express their concerns. Um, I know that, um, it, it means a lot to us to hear from the public. Uh, to our new commissioner, uh, congratulations, sir. It's glad, I'm glad to have you finally on board. I look forward to serving with you. And, uh, and thank you also to your family, um, for, for showing up here tonight and supporting you as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Merrill.
I want to say welcome, glad to have you on the board. It's been a long time waiting. I want to thank Allison Powers, uh, for being here tonight and all the hard work she does in the community to, um, she's probably had a lot of extra work this year, um, to help us with our board. Um, so congratulations, um, Clancy Balkum. I, I look forward to working with you. I know the whole board and the staff do as well. And I want to thank your beautiful family for being here again tonight. Um, it's always so nice to see the girls and, uh, your mom and Kim. And I want to say congratulations, uh, to, uh, Congressional Congressman-elect Mark Harris for being here with the Balkum family tonight. And I would be remiss not to say a very special hello to Commissioner Rushing's, uh, father, uh, Rocky for being here tonight. It's always, um, it warms our heart, um, to see you here with us, um, especially for this appointment. So thank you for being here. And thank you, um, Ashley Lance for answering questions, um, late, late in the game. We read our packets over the weekend, and then come Monday, we're like, we have questions. So thank you for being here very much. Um, and I would like to learn more if we can ever come, you know, take a tour or visit. But, um, these children are just so important. And I think, I think the need's going to be a lot greater, um, than what's estimated. Um, so thank you for speaking to us tonight.
Commissioner David Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'd also like to, uh, thank the citizens who came and spoke during, uh, both informal comments and, uh, during the public hearing for the resigning. I think we had a total of seven. Um, you know, whether you're expressing concerns or making suggestions about policy, um, I, I know all of us appreciate those comments. And I just, again, want to thank the citizens who, uh, show up at every meeting and, and, and tell us what they think. Tell us what you think. Uh, I'd also like to welcome you, Clancy, uh, to serve us on the board. Uh, I look forward to, uh, trying to gain agreement with you in, in some issues. And where we aren't able to gain agreement, to, uh, disagree amicably. So, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Commissioner Clancy Balkum.
Thank you, Jason. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When I have to sort of get accustomed to calling you Mr. Chairman instead of JR. So I, I just want to thank everyone for their support through this, through this whole process. Uh, I, I would also like to really give Allison a special pat on the back. give Allison a special pat on the back. She, that's a, almost a thankless job sometimes, and she puts in a lot of time. I have the best friends, family, and neighbors. Appreciate every encouraging phone call, every encouraging text. Those who actually stepped up to the microphone and spoke on my behalf, it means a lot. Everybody knows my beautiful mom, Judy Latham, and I have the support of my wife, Kim, and our three daughters, Kendra Kelly and Carmen. They're awfully good to me, and they give me way too much credit. I love you all. I'm very fortunate to have been raised here in Union County with strong, solid parents. My dad, my stepmom, Bennett and Reba Balkum, my stepdad, my mom, Judy, Johnny and Judy Latham. I truly am a fortunate man to have had these strong influences in my life. To my fellow commissioners, I am sure we will not always agree, but I will try my best to be civil and respectful. Because I believe King Solomon's words when he told us in the Book of Proverbs, that a gentle answer turns away wrath, but a harsh word stirs a anger. So I will strive to be respectful in our discussions. And I would ask everyone to remember Richard, Richard Helms, and his family in their prayers. And while you have God on the line, please pray for wisdom, discernment, and courage for all the members of this board. Maybe that courage part a little bit, give me an extra dose of that, because I'm a little bit nervous right now. But I would conclude by saying that I would do my best to represent the citizens of the county and look forward to serving with the county, with my fellow commissioners on this board. Thank you.
With that, that concludes this regular meeting. Thank you for all who attended. Commissioner Balkum, would you like to make a motion that we adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.